We call to order the Village Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for Wednesday, September ninth, 2020. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Scales?
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Here.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Here.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Here.
We have a quorum.
If everyone would stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And while I have you standing, anyone and everyone who intends to testify tonight must be sworn in. And so, please raise your right hand and swear that any testimony you give will be the whole truth, so help to God. Excellent, thank you. I'd also for everyone to please silence your phones and electronic devices. A reminder also, we have sign-in sheets out in the hall, on the large table, and up at the podium for anyone who testifies must sign in with their name and contact information for any public testimony. Next item is approval of minutes for the August twelfth, 2020, regular meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
So move, Van Buren?
Second, Clemmons?
Have a motion and second discussion. Roll call.
Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. My next item is open forum. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address the board on any issue that's not part of our published agenda for tonight? Seeing no one, we'll move on to a review of the public hearing procedures. It's basically a four-step procedure. First, the applicant will be introduced and present his or her petition, followed by staff. Our village staff can give illumination and question and comments to the issue. Then it's the public's turn. They can comment, ask questions of the petitioner, get that back and forth, and then the final stage, the commissioners can come in with their questions and their comments, and finally the commissioners will vote. We have with us the village attorney for consultation at all times, and I think you're all aware, but this board is a recommending board only. The village board makes the final decision. We will vote recommending yea or a nay on whatever the issue is, and then the staff will notify that you when you be scheduled to go before the village board. First item tonight, new business, is item number seven-seven-two-zero-two-zero. Planning and zoning commission to consider a request from the Village of Westmont regarding properties located at twenty-five, twenty-nine, thirty-three, North Lincoln Street in Westmont. For four items. First, a preliminary plat of consolidation to consolidate three lots into one. Second, a special use permit to allow construction of a publicly owned parking lot in the R3 Single Family Detached Residential District to serve adjoining and nearby business districts. Third, a preliminary site and landscape plan for the construction of a publicly owned parking lot in the R3 Single Family Detached Residential District. And finally, a zoning code variance to allow parking in the front yard, side yard, and in front of the setback line. Who will represent the village this evening? Village manager May, welcome.
Thank you. The, I'm here to, it's an unusual way that the Village of Westmont is in self the applicant before, you know, the planning and zoning commission of the Village of Westmont. But we do have properties on North Lincoln that we're looking to redevelop as public parking, and there's a, you know, I'm primarily here to give you, you know, an overview in the background of, you know, how we came to this point. You'll note it very, recognize it easily because it was also part of a discussion. It wasn't the topic when we were talking about the development of One North Cast, but it is a related feature, at least associated with that development. For the Village of Westmont, we have, there are three parcels today that, you know, we're looking to develop, and that's what's shown on the agenda. And, but I also wanted to point out that that's not the end of the extents that we were looking at as far as property there. We're here today with what we already have title to, and there's also the potential for it to be, you know, something more than that, too, and I could describe that a little bit as well. But for purposes of tonight, we're just talking about the site plan for what was turned in for development on those three parcels. Of those three parcels, this has been a thought, it goes back two strategic plans ago, as far as, you know, expanding parking in the downtown, and the parcel that, the furthest most north one, I guess would be thirty-three, that was, we've had that the longest. It's been a vacant lot for a long time, would be immediately adjacent. The other parking lot that you know on the corner at Irving is the parking lot for what's now the mosque, and prior to that, it was First United Methodist. So we were talking to them when the properties were for sale about just purchasing the parking lot property to make it a part of the assemblage that we're talking about today. Instead, they sold both parcels, and it is what it is. But the lot immediately south of that is a vacant lot, and the village owned that at least ten years. I don't know the year that it was closed on, but we've had that for some time, and it's remained vacant. We had an opportunity to acquire the next one south with a, we weren't going after properties, but it was a willing seller, so it was adjacent to one we already owned. We collected the next one south, which is thirty-three-twenty-nine North, and that was done, two or three years ago, we had that parcel. The next parcel south, which is village-owned today, we just closed on last year, but it was one of the parcels that the developer that I referenced for the One North Cast project had under contract. And the reason I keep relating it back to that development because of the proposed development and to mitigate, you know, the parking not only for their own use, but to replace the fifty-two public parking stalls that are on there, too, is, you know, we needed to put that somewhere else, that demand had to be mitigated somewhere else. And this was one of the opportunities to use the parcels that the village owned in conjunction with the parcel that the developer had under contract, and we did kind of started planning that way, and this was also, well, for several years, you know, we've been doing that and collecting different parts. I've got the same story about, you know, property on North Linden was the same way, but the people that were under contract were ready to go sooner than, you know, we still don't have an economic development agreement, you know, with that development. We've only just gone through the planning and zoning entitlements. And so even though the developer originally had that parcel under his contract, that was transferred to us. We bought the property, and we were just collecting them and holding them, and it's all part of the, you know, the list of what the developer's doing, what the village is doing, you know, it's, you know, got two big columns, and then it, you know, bounces out at the bottom. So we have these three parcels, and we started the design work, but it wasn't until they started going through the entitlements that we want to be able to be prepared to have the public parking lot, at least under construction, if not built before they break ground there or close that parking lot so that the replacement is in before the other one started. So that's why we're here before you tonight, otherwise we'd probably still be, you know, looking to, you know, collect some of the, you know, some additional parcels that are on there. But like I said, we only talk with, you know, willing sellers and others that are on the block as they, as they become available. So that is where we're at today, the three parcels. It's kind of adjacent to the other parking lot. That other parking lot is not part of this. That'll stay in its same configuration. It's privately owned. And our layout and site plan, we do have a, you know, the design engineer also for the project is available for the details about the design, but I'm just speaking to the history and what brought us to here today. And to further complicate that, or is that, the village engineer who's been working on this all along is no longer with us. We have a different, we have a, you know, hired design engineer. We have a different hired consulting engineer that does the review of this design engineer. So there's a lot of part and a lot of aspects to it. I'm the only one that's been here, you know, since the beginning, but I don't have intimate familiarity with the design details of the parking lot itself, just why it's here, why the layout, what it was. That was actually done with cooperation with the planning and the community development department, because there's been four or five different layouts with different configurations of how that could go. I wanted to mention that it's also got an important stormwater management component to it as well. We have, we have to put in the stormwater management or address the impact that the parking lot makes by itself, but there's additional storage built into that to maximize whatever we can get in the parking lot. And then, you know, I could talk to you another hour about the pervious alleys and the drainage network underneath, and it's all part of a bigger, well, to accommodate the bigger stormwater management needs in the, in the central business district as well. So there's a lot of parts to it, you know, we've been looking at it longer than, there's been a development proposal, but, you know, in all honesty, it's because of where that development is at now that we're, you know, here before you. I don't know if there's any questions about the background, but if, when you want to get into the design details, it is a, you know, the, what we're asking for tonight is the, you know, it is a parking lot, it's currently zoned residential, so there's that aspect of it, the using setbacks that, you know, there's no front yard setback as we're maximizing the parcel. So that's what, you know, as opposed to rezoning the parcels for, into the, into the central business district or the B1 district, this was the approach. And it potentially can be expanded both north and south should circumstances present themselves. We'd have to come back and ask for that reconsolidation, but that's the, that's the bigger plan here.
Okay, so I think we can go right on to the engineering.
Hi, I'm Vince Misek. I'm a project manager at Thomas Engineering Group. We were hired by the village to provide design and engineering services for the proposed improvements at twenty-five, twenty-nine, and thirty-three North Lincoln Street, which is now being referred to as the Lincoln Municipal Lot. So the first slide shows the location map. As you can see, it's bounded by Lincoln Street to the west, Irving Street to the north, North-South Alley to the east, and twenty-one North Lincoln, the residential lot to the south. You can see the existing asphalt parking lot, which is privately owned to the north, directly north, and the business district directly to the east, and then the residential homes to the west and to the south. That's already been covered pretty thoroughly about the purpose and need of the project, but that southwest red box, or southeast red box represents the existing public parking lot that will be displaced as part of that proposed development, and the northwest red box represents the project site, which would be providing sixty-one spaces. As you can see, it's directly adjacent to the business district as well. Here's some existing site photos. Right now, it's just vacant lot. Sometimes it's used as like a contractor's storage yard where they store their materials for village projects. Right now, the three sites are designated as Single Family Detached Residential. The red represents the commercial districts. So directly north, the parking lot is red, and to the east and to the south, farther south, it's also commercial. The zoning, the three sites are currently zoned as R3, Single Family Detached. That represents the light yellow, and the pink represents the district zoned as B1, Limited Business District. So this first slide, sort of a zoomed-out site plan. You can see Lincoln Street, Irving Street, the North-South Alley, and twenty-one North Lincoln. There are several alternatives considered for the geometric layout, however, the village ultimately decided they wanted to provide direct access from the alley right into the parking spaces. That was the preferred. So this is the layout that you're seeing. There's also three access points, one on Lincoln Street and two off the existing alley. That should help aid in congestion relief by providing multiple entrances and exits, so not everyone's coming off of Lincoln Street. The next slide is more of a zoomed-in site plan, which shows the proposed pavement markings and the layout. There's fifty-seven stalls and then four accessible stalls on the west side. For all these exhibits, north is to the right. That's just the way that the site plans are laid out in the construction plans. The typical stall dimensions used were nine feet by eighteen feet, which is smaller than the standard ten foot by twenty foot, and that was to maximize the spaces available and to make the preferred layout feasible. The third slide of the proposed site plan is the typical section, which is like essentially a cross-section that shows what the parking lot is going to be made of and key features like curb and gutter, landscape islands, lighting, and the underground detention. So the whole perimeter of the parking lot will have curb and gutter except for the side adjacent to the alley that will be flushed and meet at the existing grade. The one thing to note here is that the parking lot is graded to slope inwards away from the existing alley and Lincoln Street, and it slopes towards the center line. That comes into play for the proposed drainage plan shown here. So as the water sheet flows inwards towards that center line, it will collect in a series of catch basins that will drain into the underground detention system, which is shown as that shaded area. That detention system will fill up with water and drain into that control structure, which is shown, I'll be to the mouse, shown here. That has a restrictor in it that will cause the underground detention to fill up, and it will release water at a specified rate per the stormwater ordinance. The water will then drain north along Lincoln Street until it ties into an existing storm sewer system on Lincoln and Irving Street, as shown. The next slide shows what that underground detention system would look like. That's, a storm trap is the proposed manufacturer, and it is essentially concrete chambers or modules. This top-left photo shows what the actual chamber layout is for the proposed site. The right photo shows the schematic of what the chambers look like, the top one being an interior unit and the bottom one being exterior unit, and that lower-left is a rendering of the system under a proposed site. And like mentioned, the site is providing extra storage for any future development. Right now, the required storage is point three-three-one-two acre-feet, and we're providing roughly double that. Another key aspect of the project is lighting. The proposed light fixtures shown below are the village standard, and that one on the right is actually at the metro parking lot, and that's what the parking lot light fixtures will look like. So as the design was progressing, we had two alternatives for the proposed lighting system. The first alternative is what was shown and what the village, former village engineer directed us to move forward with until further coordination could take place, and this scenario has light fixtures at the interior islands, the four of them, and then as well as perimeter lighting to provide light at the access points and along the public sidewalk. This alternative exceeds the lot line, or the zero requirement at the lot line for the three, being Lincoln, Lincoln Street, the existing north parking lot, and the existing alley. Further direction was recently provided to move forward with providing only light fixtures at the four interior islands, so this would be the photometrics for that scenario. And keep in mind, this is still preliminary. It wasn't refined to a hundred percent because we didn't have a direction at that time. So this will be refined to ensure that the lot line does not exceed zero in any direction. The proposed landscaping plan, there was a lot of coordination with the village forester to come up with this plan to make sure that it was aesthetically pleasing and provided a dense landscape. I think in total, there is thirty-seven different species, which I'll show you on the next slide here. But if I go back, one of the key features would be the proposed site screen fence on the southern property line, which abuts twenty-one North Lincoln Street. It's a six-foot tall privacy fence, and this slide shows it, the top being the planned detail, consisting of cedar planks and cedar posts, and then the bottom being a rendering of what that would actually look like. A preliminary plat was prepared for the consolidation of twenty-five, twenty-nine, and thirty-three North Lincoln Street. As part of that, we granted a five-foot public utility and drainage easement along the north and south property lines, as well as granting a stormwater detention easement for the entire lot that would allow easy access for any future maintenance of the Currently, the three sites are zoned as R3, and proposed parking lot would require a special use permit, which we're requesting tonight. In addition to the general requirements, the three shown below are also required to be met. That consists of, it must be contiguous to a lot in the business district, which it is. A dense landscape screen must be provided along the exterior lines joining all residential districts, which we're also providing, and the front yard required must be maintained in landscape with grass, shrubs, and trees. That is also being met. So the village and tag believe that the proposed site plans meet the requirements of the special use permit, and the findings of fact are also provided. In addition to the special use permit, we're also requiring, requesting a variance for parking in the front yard or the, in front of the setback line. This is to ensure that the preferred alternative is actually feasible and can be constructed. If we were to conform to that requirement, a minimum of twenty stalls would be eliminated out of the sixty-one, potentially more. The findings of fact for the variance have also been provided, and lastly, waivers, we're requesting a waiver to utilize a nine-foot by eighteen-foot typical stall dimension instead of the ten-foot by twenty-foot typical stall, or the standard stall. If a ten-foot stall was used, it would result in a loss of seven parking spaces. And that concludes the engineering presentation.
You said seven? If they went to twenty-foot, it would reduce the number, but...
So that only accounts for switching to ten-foot wide. If we switch to twenty feet, the preferred alternative would not be feasible. It wouldn't be able, able to be built that way, so the layout would have to change. But most of the spaces are head-end spaces, except for the interior ones, so they provide adequate bumper space, and based on the codes, it can be eighteen feet. So it'd be just the interior ones that would be subpar.
Ms. Johnson?
Good evening. My name is Malini Johnson, and I'm the planner for the case. The Village of Westmont is looking to build a parking lot with about sixty-one stalls, fifty-seven of which will be regular, non-handicapped spaces, and they will be, most of them will be nine by eighteen, and the development will take place at twenty-five through thirty-three North Lincoln. And the zoning is R3, which means that a special use permit is required in order to provide accessory parking for the adjoining commercial district to the east, as well as a variance for the front, required front yard setback encroachment to allow the parking to encroach into the front yard setback. The other thing that is being requested is a waiver so that the parking stalls can be nine feet wide instead of the ten by twenty, so they'd be nine feet by eighteen, and staff finds no objections as far as, from a planning perspective, although we did receive comments related to larger trucks not being able to maneuver easily in and out, and so the recommendation would be to encourage this parking lot to be more long-term-ish so that employers can be encouraged to use this lot as opposed to regular customers that are zipping in and out of the area. Other than that, we find no issues from a zoning perspective or planning perspective, and the stormwater and engineering will be deferred to the permitting phase. However, the final plat will need to be approved as well, which will consolidate all three lots. If that were to happen, you would find yourselves with more variances, so that's where that is at. So any questions?
So you had said that with the spots, the lot was going to be meant to be used for employers, for the people downtown, or...
The idea would be to encourage, not prohibit customers from parking there. They would be more encour, customer parking is more suitable to be located closer to the businesses rather than a block away, and an employer would be more suited to kind of walk a block or would be expected to be able to walk a block or so from the parking lot to the commercial district and leave the car there for, say, four to eight hours. So that's an encouragement. We're not going to propose having signage or prohibitions or permit parking or anything. But that's something that the chamber could work out if there is an issue with people that have larger trucks and, you know, not being able to find parking on the street. Let's say an employee or an employer has a smaller car, they might want to be encouraged to park, you know, through word of mouth or coordination with the businesses if it gets a little bit tight. So, you know, right now, I don't think there's any idea to provide permit parking or anything like that. Later on, maybe that's something that could be discussed, but the design itself would allow to provide nine-foot wide parking stalls, along with the regular-sized parking stalls, of which there are about, you know, eight hundred or so in the downtown area that customers can avail themselves of, and those are regular-sized stalls.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public who would like to, please, sir, welcome?
Do I need to take my mask off?
You may.
Hi, my name is Peter Karsh. My wife, my son, and my dog.
And sir, have you signed in?
Yes.
Thank you.
I signed in outside, just...
Okay, sure. Mr. Karsh, go ahead.
We live at twenty-one North Lincoln Street, so this is going to be right up against our property. Just had a couple of questions that I wanted to go over, kind of based on the presentation. How close are you planning to build up against our lot?
Yes, sir, if you can...
Sorry. How close to our lot are you planning to build the south side of the parking lot?
Can I make a recommendation?
Yep.
So the viewing public can hear, do you mind asking all your questions at once? And then the interviewer can step up, and that way the TV audience can hear his response.
So how close to our lot are you planning to build? Was there any alternatives to having the exits going out into the alley? Has there been any consideration to parking in front of our house if that's going to change to, like, set spots or going to keep the, I think, four hours or whatever it is in front of our house? How, has there been any assessment on issues to potential flooding to our house? I know, I think you said it anchored into the middle, so just kind of wanted, if there's been any consideration to our house, if there's going to be any issues building this lot? And the lights, are they, I guess, how tall are the lights going to be, just because it's going to shine into our house, kind of where our sun sleeps and whatever? So, go ahead.
Yes, you'll need to come to the podium. Thank you, Mr. Karsh.
The proposed improvements are, the fence is proposed to be one foot offset from the lot line. the lot line, and then the actual concrete curb wouldn't start for another four feet from that. So the improvement should start five feet from the lot line. What was the next question?
The lighting would be developed for you?
Lighting, I believe it's, I have to look. I think it's 14 feet. But we'd be meeting the requirement for zero at the lot line. So at your property line, it should be zero-foot candles?
Would those be on a timer?
It's something that would--
The question is, will those lights be on a timer?
That's something that would have to be worked out with the village. The engineering, it could make that happen. It would just be the desire.
He asked a question about alternatives to the exits onto the alley, meaning, I think, maybe you--
Yeah, so we park in our garage, that's right against the alley. We have a little driveway, so if there's a constant car flow coming in and out for when we're driving in and out, it would be a little tricky for us.
Are there two aces in the alley?
Provide, providing entrances off the alley are presumably. Right now, there's one goes off Lincoln Street, and then two goes off the--
Maybe we can get an alley or a lot, and then two, I think, on the house.
Correct, yeah.
Vince, if you can repeat the question so the audience can hear.
Okay. So the question is, was any consideration given to entrances and exits off the existing alley? Currently, the proposed plan is to have one entrance and exit off Lincoln Street and two off the existing alley. There originally was supposed to be four, which would be two off Lincoln. But coordination with the village forester, the northernmost Lincoln entrance was removed in order to save a northern Catalpa tree in the parkway.
And I think the other question that you might be able to answer was, were there considerations as to potential impacts to this property from stormwater or otherwise?
Stormwater-wise, no, there shouldn't be any adverse impacts from the proposed improvements. I can't speak to if you are already experiencing drainage problems based off of--
Good, I just wanted to, we're lucky we haven't had any impact in our house, if that was my only--
Yeah, I mean, I can't guarantee if the site, your current yard, isn't graded correctly or you're having flooding, but the proposed improvement shouldn't have any adverse impacts to your property. There's no proposed ponding on the pavement. The detention is sized adequately enough where it would fill up the chambers without any ponding on the actual surface of the parking lot.
Can I ask a question there?
Sure. Go ahead.
While you're up there at the podium, I saved the time for you to come back up. I know, I don't want to speak out of turn. But anyway, one thing that I noticed on your plan, that's kind of important when you have a small detention pond like this or an underground system. The restrictor, you know, has a tendency to get clogged, and I didn't see your overland flow route on the plan. So if the system fills up with water, which way does the water go?
That's something that would have to be investigated further, but the restrictor is designed such that clogging shouldn't be an issue. I don't think it, in the future, I don't think it will be an issue. The way that it's currently designed, it prevents clogging.
Well, and the other thing that's related to that is the potential depth of ponding within the parking lot. Is that, how deep is that?
There is no proposed ponding for the parking lot. It'd be zero.
But if it did?
But if it did?
The keeper is the center than the driveway out to Lincoln Street?
It's sloped at roughly 1 to 2, 1 to 1.75 percent from both directions. So I'd have to--
Have to look and see. It looks like that the water depth could be potentially deep. I just can't tell if the water would flow out of there or not. So if you have a clog, the water could fill up and be a problem for public works--
Yeah.
--because of the depth of the water in there, if there's cars parked in there.
The northernmost curb would be the overflow point, most likely. I'd have to look at it a little bit further.
That's fine. I just want to make you aware of that. I didn't see that on the plan, but that could be something that you could look at.
Yeah, it's the structure that you're revising.
Yeah, there's a overflow weir in the structure as well, so it should flow over.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, for interjecting.
Mr. Chairman.
And there's one other question that was asked that wasn't answered yet, and Malini, you kind of touched on it, it was, I think the resident asked about, was there any thought to parking tiny moments, something along those lines?
Yeah, so in front of our house, I think it's the standard, between six and six, you can park for four hours, or can park overnight.
You're talking about on Lincoln Street, not in the parking?
Yeah, on front of our house. Just if you ever had family or whoever it might be, they can park in front of the house for a couple of hours. A couple of blocks in our driveway, but if we have an overflow, we can turn to, like, pay parking or, you know, spots similar to even parking lot.
That's not really a zoning issue, I would say, but it is something that could be arranged through conversations with the village over time, as far as putting on the parking or--
There's no plan to change that. The on-street will be unchanged.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Vince. Mr. Karsh, do you have any more comments or questions?
I do have one question. Could I interject to you?
Sure.
It's for the engineer. Can we go back to the perimeter lighting on the south side? Because when you said 14 feet, that kind of caught my attention. It seemed high, since it's only a six-foot fence.
Sorry, pull it back up?
Sure. I'm just having trouble even seeing them on the plans. I see the ones in the islands, but--
I think it's listed in the islands, the center islands.
Page 11 shows--
Oh, okay. I thought that there were additional lights directly against--
Originally, they were supposed to have perimeter lighting through the access points.
So by nine lights, now there's just four. And they're in the center.
All right. That sounds better.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to address the board?
Hello, Kyle Nussham. I'm happy to hear that this project is going through. It sounds like we've been working on it for a number of years, but obviously, it's very necessary now with the new development going on at Cass and Burlington there. The only thing that made me a little hesitant was that Mr. May mentioned, you know, we've been working on this for so long, it could include more parcels, it could not, but we kind of, like, need to get a move on. So what if we, you obtain another parcel, are we going to have to come all the way back here, redesign everything again? And, you know, again, that takes more time away. When this is needed, I think the plan was also to have the construction people park in this lot while they're building the new development, as well as needed for our customers and employers downtown. We mentioned lighting, only four in the middle, which makes me a little concerned because there's already that one parking lot that belongs to the church, and then another parking lot in an alley. It could get pretty dark there. I definitely understand the residents' concern, though, so maybe just access point lighting at the very north point on the alley, but not both points, access points within the And happy to hear about the stormwater. It sounds like it's going to hold double what's usually required there, but I am also concerned about if, you know, something breaks or, you know, backs up. It sounded like that the overflow is going to go right on Irving, you mentioned, which might go right over Cass to your business, as well to my house. So, again, lots, there's so much water in that area, it's already a concern. So I just want to make sure that adding more cement, no land to absorb that, that we really focus and make that work and work well. That's all for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I can add a little bit to those comments. The, and backing up a little bit to the lighting, the fixtures are the same standard that you see out in front of the building here and throughout the downtown, so that black one. In fact, if you go to the back lot behind the parking, behind the village hall here, there's lights in that parking lot, you know, right up against the residential parcel as well. But for perspective, when you're looking at it, that's the fixture being proposed. The, the design of the parking lot and the layout, even though it had access from the alley, the two main aisles run north and south, and that was with the idea of having, you know, expansion in mind. So, you know, you know, if there is a further expansion of the parking lot in the future, does it, do we need to come back here? Yes. Do we need to do some constructive changes? Yes. But it's laid out so that, other than at the frontages, north and south, the rest of the parking lot is unaffected because that pattern can just be continued north, or it could be continued south. And that was, but by design as well, you know, to accommodate that. I'll back up further, not to aggravate the discussion, but when we first started talking about this location, there was actually, you know, talk or thought about a parking deck, you know, and could that be accommodated, you know, at this location, too. So you'll also note that, not that there's any plans to do it, but the stormwater management underneath is built in a way to accommodate if there was ever, you know, structure, too, so that we don't have to undo the stormwater management to do that. And not that it's directly, you know, important, but the downstream tributary area at that location is to the west. And so if it got out onto Lincoln Street or Irving, that's its overland flow route is westerly. I like the comment about the lighting at the entrances, but that's, you know, we'll just take that into consideration and fine-tune it as we go. The actual design of the lighting, photometric plan, that's all done at the permit stage. So, the comment's accepted, but I don't think you need to--
Sir, can you address the reasoning behind the reduction from nine lights to four? The plans are showing nine--
Yeah, I don't know specifically, other than it was probably to, you know, not adversely affect the immediate residential neighborhood. So to the, yeah, public right-of-way to the west, public right-of-way to the north, alley commercial to the east, so there's one residential property that fronts it, and then across the street, you know, a line of homes that are there as well. But if the target is zero at the lot line, you don't need them at the perimeter, because you'd be shielding half of it anyway, so.
I think Ms. Nussham's point there, about at least a fifth light at the northeast corner there at the alley--
That's a good idea.
--has merit. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay. Let's go to the commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Thomas.
I need the engineer back up, just to, just to go over, just to go over, again, the water storage for the public, comparing to the grass and the taking in rainwater and that and storage, compare that to after you're done with the lots, and how much water can be stored over and above what the, what the land would have done without you guys touching it at all. I just need people to know how much water protection, because in that area, we get wet.
Yeah. Well, the existing land, that's all vacant land that used to be houses. So even though it's grassed, it probably is a little bit more compacted than normal, and given, you know, if there is a rain event, it's already going to be saturated, so it's not going to hold that much anyways. The contours wasn't a low depression, depressional area, so by providing nearly double what's required during, until the future parking lot is expanded, if that ever happens, the stormwater should be more than adequate to--
Okay, so how many gallons are we talking about, that, at full capacity?
It's .609 acre-feet.
You do the--
Yeah. I'd have to convert it to cubic yards. I think it's like 30,000 cubic yards of water.
Target. Okay. Commissioner--
Well, I'm sure that you've done your best to try and make the most of it, to still have enough parking spaces, make it look nice, not to affect the neighbors too much. So I think that the engineering has been, has been not just adequate, but has been really good. One of my concerns is this, for the non-permit-holding commuter parkers, this would be awfully handy for them compared to going halfway to Fairview Avenue down for commuter parking. Is this going to be a problem, that this is going to fill up with commuters and not allow parking for the people that we're trying to develop it for?
So I guess the best way to think about that is the parking lot on Burlington and Cass is also a public parking lot, and it's right there, you know, on the intersection. So it's just a matter of monitoring it, that's, I would, no, it wasn't here at the time this was developed, but the reason we have four-hour parking all the way from 55th Street to Naperville Road is to discourage commuter parking on the street. So that's very great. There are some areas in the central business district that are two-hour. I don't know about, off the top of my head, I can't inventory all of them, but they're either two-hour or four-hour to, you know, afford easy access for the users while discouraging commuters from doing that. So it's a recognizable concern, but know how to manage it.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
I don't believe I have any more comments or questions. I think that the landscape looks like it's going to do a good job as a buffer. And I understand the need, you know, I think the, the unique need for the variance is just that we need as much parking as we can get for the lot for our public downtown. And so I'm supportive of it.
Commissioner Scales?
I think just one, one question. If the development at 1 North Cass doesn't go forward, does this lot still go forward in development?
The, it is planned for a public parking lot, no matter what. It is, the timing would be critical with the development. They, like I said, you know, they went through their entitlements, but we're not, you know, close to doing the rest of it. By close, I mean, we're, you know, still many months out before that will ever get to the village board. So I don't know that will be breaking ground and, well-- Remember what they suspected?
April 2021.
They say that, but that's, you know, we're not any farther on their other parts, so.
Okay. And then, Mr. Van Buren, I think there is one block to the, to the west, there is, at the corner of Grant and Irving, there's two more free parking lots that are owned by the church that say, "Free commuter parking." So, and I walk by there quite often. I don't often see many people parked in those on my walks, but I just wanted to mention that. I noticed that when you asked that question. That's all I have. Thanks.
Great. Commissioner LaVoy?
I'm always up for a good couple of questions, especially with Mr. May here.
All right.
I noticed on the, on the engineering plans that the tree removal has unit counts on them. And I know this came up in a, in just one of the most recent petitions to us for the added parking lot for the grocery store neighbor in Cass. And I know that the requirement for that tree replacement was pretty excessive.
It was, it was a high number for the category of what was called a heritage tree, which I don't believe any exist on here, so there was a--
That's where I'm going. Is anything on here?
No.
Because I saw the unit counts, and I know it warrants a heavy landscape plan because of where it is, but--
But the, you know, Vince described the village forester's participation, you know, like with the landscape plan as well, and that was to mitigate some of that removal, even though they weren't heritage trees. And from a, you know, to get the most, you know, the very, very, very first iteration of this was just a massive pavement, and, you know, it's how many stalls can you fit in there? So it was their participation that even got the islands in the middle, together with, you know, the village planner, they're these tough group. All the landscape amenities that are in there were all adjustments from a much bigger amount of pavement, working backwards.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'm very supportive of the, of the project. I think it warrants a heavier landscape plan, and it seems like it's been well thought out. The lighting plan, basically, I just want to confirm that the-- I just want to confirm that the foot candles, both on the low end and on the high end, will meet ordinance requirements, I would suggest. And the only thing that I really see that's a problem is, is not within the petition at all. It's just that some of our establishments downtown are open till 1:00 or 2:00 a.m., I think. And if they park there, they're going to be coming into that lot and leaving it at 1:00 or 2:00 a.m. But there's nothing that we can do about that. So, but I am supportive of the application. Good job.
And I'm supportive as well. I guess the one, I understand the reduction from nine to four lights, but I would support a fifth light back at that northeast corner on it. So, any further?
Yes, I haven't spoke yet.
I'm sorry. Allison, of course, your turn.
I still have a question on the parking thing. Currently, I know you're trying to replace the parking also at One North Cass. One North Cass is not employee parking, though. It's, there is a sign that says, "No Employee Parking."
Right.
And so, my understanding is that you're thinking of having employee parking, though. So, I might be incorrect in understanding this.
Yeah. And that's not incorrect, but that was more of a comment towards why we're, the nine-foot width is what is the subject of all of that conversation, like how long are the people going to be there? So, like, right on the street, you want them to turn over, or if you, you've heard me make the opposite argument for the developer on 63rd Street that was putting in, you know, it was a coffee shop, and he wanted to put in these little stalls. And I'm like, this is very short-term parking. You're talking 15 minutes. You know, some people might hang out, but there's just a very high turnover. And that's where you want to not deviate from the 10-foot stall. So, for, as long as I've been here, it's, you know, 10-foot's been long, you know, customer parking, and 9-foot's been like employee parking, was just a way to think of it. So, if you were building your own parking lot for your own staff, 9-foot was adequate because it only moved a couple times a day.
Okay.
Now, with the rest of it, there's, there's no direct interest, you know, in doing that, but there's an overall interest in how to accommodate downtown business parking, because there's a lot of, there's a, most of them don't have their own parking available, you know, on-site. So, they, all of them, obviously rely, except for, you know, like examples like me, or where they've got large amount of parking on their property, everyone else relies on public parking on the street and, you know, in the public lots.
And there is employee parking in different spots and times.
We have areas that are designated, you know, employee parking only, and then we've got other areas where a couple of the permities could be, you know, in different spots, but it's kind of like case by case.
Okay, that answered my question, sir. I am in favor also. We do need the parking, so...
Okay, thank you. And, yeah, oh, my question's been answered. Thank you, Chairman May.
Thank you all.
Okay, under planning and zoning item 772020, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Village Board of Trustees.
So move, LaVoy.
Second, Scales.
First of all, item A, a preliminary plat of consolidation to consolidate three lots at 25, 29, and 33 North Lincoln Street, located in the R3 Single Family Detached Residential District.
So move, LaVoy.
Second, Scales.
Second, I have a motion and a second discussion on the item, on the motion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Allison?
Clemmons.
Clemmons.
Yes.
Clemmons, I'm sorry. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Item B, a special use permit to allow the construction of a publicly-owned parking lot in R3 Single Family Detached Residential District to serve adjoining and nearby business districts. Motion to approve?
So move, Thomas.
Second, Clemmons.
Motion and second. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Carmichael.
Commissioner Thomas?
Commissioner Thomas?
Is a yes.
And Carmichael, yes. Item C, a preliminary site and landscape plan for the construction of a publicly-owned parking lot in the R3 Single Family Detached Residential District. Motion to approve? So move, Sharp.
Second, Scales.
Motion and second. Discussion on the item. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. And item D, zoning code variance to allow parking in the front yard, side yard, and in front of the setback line.
So move, Van Buren.
Second, Thomas.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael votes yes as well.
Well, Commissioner Carmichael.
Okay, Manager May, that we can next take that to the board. Thank you for coming, and Vince, thank you. And Mr. Karsh and Ms. Newsom, thank you for coming out tonight, and your testimony was helpful. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is PCC 78-2020, Commission to Consider a Request from McGrath Lexus of Westmont regarding the property located at 500 East Ogden for the following. Two items. First, is zoning code variance to exceed the number and location of wall signs for an open sales lot located at 470 East Ogden, commonly known as 500 East Ogden Avenue in the B2 General District, Business District. And second, zoning code variance to exceed the aggregate size of all signs for an open sales lot located at 500 East Ogden. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mike Bay. I work for Southwater Signs out of Elmhurst. I'm here on behalf of McGrath Lexus of Westmont. We are in the process of permitting some wall signs at this location. As part of our research process, we noted that code had changed quite a few years back. And due to the code change, we do have to go for variance to get the same number of signs that the building had previously. As you may be aware, if you've driven down Ogden, the McGrath Lexus has went through a major renovation recently. They've updated the overall look of the building to come into the century and be competitive with the neighboring dealerships that are along the Ogden Thoroughfare. As part of this process, they've added some architectural elements that bring out the building, makes the building pop. As you can see from the photo, we are in the process of permitting McGrath Lexus of Westmont sign and the pre-owned sign, which is currently with zoning and is allowed within code. However, with the code change that did happen, the allowance went from, I believe, four wall signs to two, which is basically one major wall sign and ancillary sign, which is the McGrath Lexus of Westmont and pre-owned signs. When the designs for this building came out, there was this protruding architectural element that comes off the building towards Ogden. One of the main thought processes behind this architectural element was visibility from Ogden Avenue. Now, here, and it's the two wall signs that are on this architectural element is the reason that we're here and requesting variance. I touched on the first bullet point was, they were previously allowed four wall signs, and it's been dropped down to two. We're requesting the two additional signs so we can put them on the protruding element. One of the main reasons that we're requesting this and that architectural element was added was the dealership lot sits further back on, from Ogden than many of the dealerships that are along Ogden. It's 156 feet from the lot line. And to add on to that, the actual dealership itself sits somewhat below the Ogden Street elevation. So, the whole building and the whole lot sits a little bit lower, which makes visibility from Ogden a little more difficult. The idea of this is the protruding element sits roughly about 35 feet from grade. We're proposing that the sign will sit 28 feet from grade, making it very visible for people that are traveling east and west on Ogden. And lastly, we want to make sure that McGrath Lexus of Westmont can stay competitive with the other dealerships that are on Ogden. In all honesty, some of the dealerships have beautiful signage. It's very visible, great-looking buildings and signs, and we want to make sure that McGrath Lexus can stay on par with some of the other dealerships that are on Ogden. This is the site plan. Currently, the sign that we're posting would go where sign one is. There is two existing monuments at the two entrances/exits to the dealership. Here's a close-up of the rendering. It's a 35-foot architectural element. The sign will go from grade to bottom of sign, would be 25 feet, 718 inches. And here's the details on the sign. We're talking about a nine-foot by seven-foot, one and one-fourth inch logo. The logo will be on both sides of the architectural element, so if people are traveling east and west, we'll be able to see it. This is a cross-section and mounting. I've confirmed with McGrath Lexus and my installer that we'd be using lag screws. They've provided a base for us to attach these signs to the element without issue. Here's the sign undering showing it from 25 feet, from grade to 25 feet and 718 inch. I was asked to also show if we were to keep with the 16-foot limitation that is for ground signs, since this protruding element does protrude and go down. If we were to approach it that way, at 16 feet, it would be moot to even attempt it. This picture was taken from street level. You can barely see the logo there. And in comparison, that was it at 25 feet. These are signs that are in permits now. It's a 201 square foot McGrath Lexus of Westmont and the service sign, which is 30 square feet. And I just included pictures of the existing ground signs that are not changing and are all within code. This is the first one, and that is the second one. And that's it. Do you guys have any questions?
Well, first, let's go to staff.
Oh, sorry.
And, Ms. Johnson, you have?
So, again, my name is Malini Johnson, case planner. The applicant is proposing to add two logo signs to the permitted, currently permitted, wall signs. That has a center sign, which is a main sign, and then a pre-owned sign, which is allowed for open sales lots businesses. So, the way that it is calculated, we try to provide you with a table so that you can look at all of the numbers that were crunched in terms of the signage that is allowed, that is, you know, that used to be allowed, and so on. So, they're requesting a variance of 301 square feet over what they would be allowed, taking into consideration the wall signs, the two logos, and the ground signs on the parkway area. So, we do find that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, with the plan for Autumn Mile, with the strategic plan of the Village of Westmont, and with the zoning code. So, we don't have any, you know, staff doesn't have any objections to this proposal. And it's basically a situation as to whether it's something that you would desire to do to continue that look that the Autumn Mile has. I was driving up and down the street, and it is very hard to see the building. So, although we see the ground sign that protrudes quite a bit with that non-conforming sign that exists right now, once you know kind of about where the building is, it's kind of a sea of parking and, you know, it's, in a way, it functions as a wayfinding sign. So, that's how we see it. Any questions?
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the issue tonight? Seeing no one, let's go to the commissioners, and we'll start with...
I thought you wanted to be on there. You can be on the...
Maybe, maybe not. Let's see what...
I'm sure someone will have a question for you.
Start with Commissioner Sharp.
Hi, thank you for coming and presenting to us, going through this process. I did take a look at the packet that we received, and Ms. Johnson did include a gross area table for us that kind of laid out the previous and the proposed footages. And as she stated, there's a 301 square foot ask above the current zoning regulation. We did just go through the sign code a couple of years ago, and I think we did a good job at that time clarifying a lot of various conditions that might occur, and with special focus along Ogden Avenue also. But as I was reading through this packet, I just, when I get a variance, and I'm trying to read through it, I always try to stick pretty tight to the criteria for variances, which the staff always includes in our packet. There's 10 different items that we can use to think about the proposed variance. And I just really struggle, and you might be able to help me, or maybe other commissioners, but I struggle with seeing the unique need here, because to me, the current monument sign is large, and it's a Lexus logo. What is being proposed are Lexus logos, so we're not adding new information to the public or really even to wayfinding, in my opinion. And I just, the letter that was included references grade, that it's a little bit below grade on Ogden Avenue, which is true, and that it's setback further than it could be. But the grade, in my opinion, is not substantial. It might be an inconvenience, but it's not a hardship. And then I also think that the setback of the building is self-inflicted on the part of their ownership. So, I really don't see the need for variance on this one, unfortunately. That's all I have.
Commissioner Scales?
So, I guess I just have a couple of quick questions. And I'm looking at the comments from Jason Vitell, the building commissioner. And I just want to make sure I'm clear going through this. So, the request is for the two additional signs that are going on that architectural element, correct?
Yes, sir.
Which is just the circular logoed signs that put them above the request. Okay. And then, is the comment about the impractical and unsafe to have a disconnect switch, can someone elaborate on that, or is that something that's being made? Pardon my ignorance, but I'd like to understand that a little bit better.
Yeah, I can elaborate on that. The reason for a disconnect switch on the sign itself is for a service technician to be able to go up there, shut off electric to the transformer, which powers the sign, and then they can change out transformers LEDs without ever having to go in the dealership. That's why we added disconnect up there, where we can disconnect all electric running in the sign. If there was something that had to be done at 6:00 in the morning before anybody was there, we'd be able to get in, get out without issue.
Got it. Were you going to say something, Malini?
I was just going to say, the comment that I heard from the building commissioner had to do with the accessibility of the disconnect switch from the ground, in terms of workers getting up there and disconnecting and so on. So, it might be more convenient to have it at a lower level, like 12 feet, where it's easier to, you know, get, to switch it on and off. But that was his comment.
It would only be a service technician that would be doing it. It would be a sign technician and they'd come in a bucket, so that's why the disconnect's up there. Also, if you put it down low, I've seen it happen a couple of times where kids come around and they, you know, hit a switch and then nobody can figure out the issues. You call a service technician out there and they just.
And I believe that's a suggestion. I'm not sure if it's something that's code-related where they need to comply with that. I think it was a suggestion that he was.
Okay, thank you. That's my only questions right now.
Okay. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yeah, I have a few questions too for Malini. I don't mean to make you get up again, but you can shake your head if you want and just give a yay or a nay. So this request is for 301 square feet, which is over 100% of what the allowable is. Have we ever granted a variation to that extent before?
Don't believe so in the time that I've been.
Ms. Johnson, can you come to the microphone?
Okay. I don't believe that there has been anything that I've seen as far as granting a variance that is so large that it exceeds, you know, 100% or the total. I think the reason that this contrast is there is because when the zoning code, I mean when the sign code was amended, it was addressing the entire village. It wasn't addressing the auto mile specifically. And the only change with the auto mile is that they added one sign, I believe, so that there would be two signs that would be allowed on a building that's selling autos, cars. But, you know, overall, the question would be, do we want to amend eventually any of the regulations for the car lots that are along Ogden? They're larger in scale and scope and reach. They're more regional, you know, in terms of the draw to the area from other places and television and all that. So the idea is to provide a kind of beacon of here we are as opposed to serving the community. But right now, we're just going to process variances if they come in. But it is excessive in relation to other local variances. I don't know if there's been other auto-related sign code variances.
BMW may have received a variance and, you know, because auto dealerships now have, you know, service and the dealership, so they've got multiple wall signs and monument signs. One example I can think of, and Commissioner Van Buren, I know you may remember this, the car wash on Ogden, there was a bit of a fight over quite a number of signs that they proposed, and I think that was at least 100% over what was allowed by code and ultimately was granted. But that was pre-sign amendments that were made in the last couple of years.
Yeah, I just don't recall having a variation to that extent above and beyond the code, which is over 100%. I'm kind of with Commissioner Sharp on this too, because I know, driving up and down Ogden Avenue, I know where the Lexus dealer is just by the sake of the sign that's there. And there's no mistake, I mean, you can see it from a pretty far distance. Also, on Jason Vitell's comments, I think are fairly valid. And I know that, you know, with his comments, I drove Ogden Avenue and it is seen to be a trend. Packer Webb down at Downers Grove did the same thing where they protruded their building out and put their sign on that. It's almost made for the sign kind of thing. And we are setting precedence on that for sure. So I, I have a question related to the picture that you had up there and your sign package. I want to be clear that you're actually removing, and in your sign package, you show, I'll just show it to you, that it has letters on the building like pre-existing or like used cars, whatever, get this exact language. Has that been considered that they are being removed?
All old signage. All old signage has been removed. We're in the process of permitting the McGrath Lexus of Westmont sign and the service sign. The pre-owned sign has been removed and it's been removed from.
Yeah, yeah. And I saw it in the picture and I said, you know, I didn't see that when I was out there, so I.
I meant to cover that up. I apologize.
Yeah, okay. I'm clear now. But, you know, going 100%, over 100% over and the signs that were there and the visibility, the findings of fact, I'm kind of with Commissioner Sharp on this. You know, I don't think it's a hardship and I'll just wait until I hear from the commissioners' comments.
Mr. Clemmons?
I respectfully disagree on that part because I know when, like, I drive down Ogden Avenue and stuff like that, maybe it's just my bad driving or that I'm getting older. But when I'm going down, trying to make a decision where you're turning and stuff like that, I appreciate the signage and so for that reason, it'd be easier to read and to notice which one, because there are lot car dealers and stuff like that. I've, because I've gone there for business events and stuff like that. So I'd be in favor of the sign.
Mr. Thomas?
When I went and drove into the parking lot, I didn't, I support this because the lower, what do you want to call it? The building is below street level, not eye level. That puts them at a slight disadvantage with the other ones because everybody's logos are out there. And I understand that, and Lexus being Lexus, they need their eye, their logo there. It has two exits, I mean, two entrances into the thing, into their lot. And I support both signage at each entrance. And it's not gaudy. I don't find it gaudy at all. And it, and you have to hang with your competition. And I support you on this. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren?
Yes. Lexus has been a very important business to the village of Westmont. Not only that, they're very supportive to Westmont, its community affairs and so on. And they're asking for, it sounds like a lot of 300 or 100% plus variance. However, we're talking about two logo signs. And that projection that been a part of the remodeling is actually, it's made for that logo to go up there, I think. And whether you call it a sign, I know we've had a little problem with trying to define a sign. I think we did that with the Chicken Place that came on a new 63rd and Cass development. But I really, I really don't see this as a big violation of the signage ordinance and I would be supportive of it.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I saw the numbers and Mr. Vitell's just, his rationale, but I do think findings of fact on this, supportive of the request for the variance, both the 156-foot setback and, and I know the six feet drop down from grade isn't terribly significant, but I think it all adds up. And I think too, along this Westmont Auto Mile, it's all these dealerships together in their large sales lot that it's, it's easy to justify. I support it. So if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I got a question.
Please, sir.
All right, thank you everyone for being here tonight. My name is Jimmy Tran. I'm the general manager of McGrath Lexus of Westmont. Just to bring a little bit of clarity about that architectural element, it's not, it wasn't an element that we specifically as a management team or executive team or the ownership developed into the planning of the remodel. Lexus came out with a vision probably about five years ago to revamp the look of a Lexus facility across the entire country. They named it Vision 2020 and every Lexus dealership needed to adhere to the franchise rules of a look that they wanted to project, sort of any franchises out there, Wendy's or McDonald's kind of have a certain look. And part of the look that Lexus put forth for us was to have an architectural element with the Lexus emblems on it. So, you know, I just wanted to bring a little bit of clarity that this was not something that ownership or the executive panel from the McGrath organization that we wanted to put a pylon sign out there just to project a logo on Ogden Avenue. This was trying to adhere to some of the franchise laws and the franchise rules that were bound to. You know, had we known that there were certain ordinances or certain variances that we need to go through, maybe we could have gone to a different drawing board. But, you know, at this point in time, we were kind of a little bit late in the game in finding this out. And I think part of the COVID shutdown, the pandemic didn't help the cause for us to, we didn't really catch it until everything was ready to start to be constructed. That's when we originally got the call from Jason, the building commissioner, and say, hey, you guys are building this architectural element with these logos on there. It's not part of the ordinance. Well, at that time, it was already constructed. The plans were already approved and I'm not sure if the plans were subletted out at that point in time because of the COVID shutdown. And that's what brings us here today. But again, I just want to bring clarity that that sign is something that Lexus, as a franchise, was requiring us to do, so.
All right, well, thank you for that.
Yep.
And, you know, understand that our vote tonight, whether it's a recommendation to approve or recommendation not to approve, is going to the village board and they are the ones who are going to have the say-so on this. Ours is merely a recommendation. So, you know, it may very well be in your, to your advantage to attend that meeting and talk to those elected officials. Okay? Any other commissioner comments? Do I have motion to approve A, zoning code variance to exceed the number and location of wall signs for an open sales lot located at 470 East Ogden, Ogden Avenue, commonly known as 500 East Ogden Avenue, in the B2 general business district?
So moved, Scales.
Second, Clemmons?
Motion a second. Discussion, questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. And secondly, a zoning code variance to exceed the aggregate sign, size of all signs for an open sales lot located at 470 East Ogden Avenue, commonly known as 500 East Ogden Avenue, in the B2 general business district.
So moved, Van Buren.
Second, Thomas.
Motion and second. Discussion, questions on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren says yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
No.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. There you go, gentlemen. You'll be notified by staff when you're scheduled to appear before the village board.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much for your presentation.
Have a good night.
Good night. With all the agenda items miscellaneous, any commissioners have comments or updates of any kind? I would just point out that this Friday is the 11th of September. It's the 19th anniversary of the terrorist attacks on the, on the World Trade Center and the Pentagon. There will be a 10 o'clock in the morning, a small ceremony put on by the Westmont Post 338 of the American Legion at Veterans Park. The public would be invited to that. If no one has anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second, Scales.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.